All right, good evening, everyone. I apologize. My day has been kind of messed up with calendars all day. So my apologies for a couple of minutes late. Please, American flags in the front and rear. As always, please join us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Parker, would you please take the roll?
Atchison.
Here.
Byrd.
Here.
DeCambre.
Here.
Demott.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Scully.
Here.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, looking for a motion for the consideration of the minutes of the February 12th meeting. Ms. Pinter, if you would, please.
Yes, I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of February 12th, 2018, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Moving to the next item. We have no presentations tonight. And the next item up will be citizen communications. This is a period of time that we allow citizens to come forward for a period of up to five minutes on any subject that you may wish to talk about unless there is a public hearing scheduled later in the agenda. We do have two items that will be later on, but not at the City Council portion, but at the WIDA and the GID point. Will be public hearings on those two items later on in the agenda. So if you have comments on any of those, please hold it till that time. Other than that, rules are always the same. Come forward. I have three people who have signed up so far. Your green light tells you your time has started. The yellow light tells you you have one minute left, and the red light tells you your time is up. And please use the microphone and speak clearly into the microphone. So at this time, Mr. Palmer, you're up, sir.
Good evening, all of you. Thank you. Last time I talked about the taxes, there are fourteen taxes on our telephone bill. One is a city sale tax, 3.85 percent. Other, the city occupation tax, 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 tax. In one case, I had to pay about $12, and more than a half of the payment was all tax, like $8. And really, the service were only $6. So I just mentioned this to you, so when you, if you could, just make it easier, take out those taxes from the people, you know, the city tax, sale tax, and occupation tax. That's one issue I wanted to mention. And the other one is I started to talk about the property right, restriction of it. As far as I know, there has to be a really important reason to interfere with the property right. And I would say, just like if you have a highway and there's a curve, there are too many accidents, people are lying there. If there is a house, you could go straight in the front of the house, in the back of the house, and make a road more straight. But just I thought I would mention this because we talked about it. Another thing is our safety issue. I walk in here through the gate, search, any little iron piece, of course, they are foregone. But I don't think a gun is killing because we have a lot of police here, and I don't see their guns kill. If it kills, there has to be a reason for it, I imagine. But I would like to see that, you know, the safety, you are safe here. I would like to see that the city would be safe as you are safe here, or we are safe here, and the people who come, which is very nice. So I just, you know, people coming, United States, I came here through the border, I flew it here. Anyway, when they come, they should be weathered. All welcome, not the criminals. I don't have anything true against those people who come, you know, and they are having a good background check. The safety is important for me and for everybody, I think. Other thing is, I would like to mention, the city goes into business, real estate business, and go to charity and all the things. I think these are belonging to the private sector, and they would do a better job and more efficient. When somebody takes over, a city takes over, that's a people, the city, and the service instead of an employed. It is about four places. Cut out the middle, just mathematics. I just, you know, try to convince you. Other thing I would like to mention, I pass you to this, literature to you. It's a budget of the United States and how they spend the money. I think we should learn from this. This goes up every year, $1 billion. Looks like running out of steam. And the funny thing, the things which are really getting higher and higher and higher are those things which are not constitutional, like education. There is no mention of education in the Constitution as a parent's job to do it. And the next item, which is very huge, it's called the health care. I don't want a government come between me and doctor and my insurance. The other one is higher education. I don't know how much higher that is comparing with the European colleges and here where I attended, but it's a joke here. And the last one is, which is human services. Now, if you cut out those things and you could see on the bottom, there is almost continuous no growth. But these are very going higher and higher, like a volcano, it's ready to erupt. Okay, just what I talk about. That's the federal government. So I ask you to consider if really what you spend is constitutional.
Your time is up.
Time, time up?
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Ms. Palmer?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Palmer. I'm with Laura Mitchell from the Adams 12 Board of Education. It's very tall for a short person, just saying. Thank you for having us during public comment. We are going to all of our city partners this year because we have great news to share about Adams 12. We also want to meet new council members, Councilor Demott and Councilor Scully. Just so you see our faces, we feel we have a great partnership with Westminster, but we want to make sure that we let you know about good news when we have it. And we also have a special invitation for you. So we just want to first report on our graduation rates. Our district graduation rate rose to 84.4 percent this year. That's our highest ever. And it's up more than 11 percentage points from 2010. So we're very excited. For the high schools that serve Westminster, Legacy High School is at 92.9 percent. Mountain Range, like, at 89.6. And North Glenn, which you all know because you heard comments from folks, is now at 89.8 percent. So the addition of our STEM programming has made a huge difference there, and we're very proud of what's going on at North Glenn. We also had a record of 12 schools earn academic achievement awards from the state. So we have raised the bar for all of our schools at every level. We used to have 11 schools on priority or improvement plans. We're down to four, and we have improvement plans for all those. So we really feel like we're doing a good job serving all kids. Our graduation rate for Hispanic students now sits at 80.4 percent, which is up nearly 30 percentage points since 2010. So we are really also trying to make sure that we serve all of our students and that every student gets the opportunities they deserve. I know several of you were at some groundbreakings for our renovations that came as a result of our bond at Arapahoe Ridge and Cotton Creek. And those will be done and open by the fall. So we'll have kids in those expanded classrooms. I also know you've been working on, with us, on perhaps some land for our new CTE expansion. We're still looking at all the options, but that will open in 2020. What else? Those were the main pieces. I will get to the invitation because what we're doing now, as you know, we had a really public process when we did our bond. We wanted to know what our citizens want and valued, and now we're looking at the same process in a different format for our operational dollars. And we have a process called Elevate, and it is an appreciative inquiry process where we talk to our citizens and major stakeholders and find out what they want Adams 12 to look like in the next five years. And based on those priorities, that's what we're going to use to set our budget. It's going to, what we're going to use to set our programming. And we have a summit on April 5th, 2018, coming up in a few weeks. And we would love if any or all of you would like to attend because, again, we feel our cities are our partners, and we want to make sure that we get your input and we work with you as we have in the past. So I have these summit invitations, and then I will let Laura talk because she has been working with you all on the Start by Believing project.
Hi, and again, congratulations, and thank you for having us here this evening. And I wanted to just say I have been participating in the Start by Believing campaign and supporting Westminster in those meetings. So I really do feel we have a great partnership, and it works both ways in trying to move all of our community forward. And our schools, of course, are a big piece of that. So we appreciate all your support and are glad that we can support as well. I did have a meeting with our superintendent today, and we talked about all the progress to date and the plans that are laid out. And we are looking at supporting the gala on March 30th. We will make sure that we have people there. We also are looking at April 9th for the Front Range Community College and the city meeting that night. But we also are working on a date to have, you know, the Start by Believing membership somewhat, you know, if it's you and Anita or you and others, to work with, to meet with some of our staff. Because what we talked about today is a follow-up to the meeting last week, which I thought was a really eye-opening when one of the folks that were there mentioned that it could cause, you know, some people could have a different emotional reaction. And so we talked about wanting to make sure that we focus on all of our schools and make sure that all of our staff and our teachers, our principals, and our counselors are all prepared for that event and are aware that it's happening and be cognizant to pay attention to what's happening with our kids in our schools and making sure that if any of those signs were to come up. So we'll look forward to getting a date and time coordinated with you guys to come in and really talk specifically about where and when we ought to be doing those kinds of things and what we can do to further that. Thank you very much.
Jing, Bartwell?
Hi, how are, hi, how are you? I'm with, my name is Jenna Bartwell, and I'm with Southwest Minister's Arts Group, the nonprofit arts group located at the Rodeo Market Community Arts Center. That's at 3915 West 73rd Avenue. We have been asked by Parks and Recreation to vacate the building on or before June 1st. We just wanted to talk to the City Council about the things that we have done in Southwest Minister. We were established as a partner with the city to be responsible for the building that the city did not want to occupationally be responsible for. SWAG's effort in the last decade has generated revitalization in our neighborhood and created the sense of community that did not exist prior to our inception. We have been located there since 2009, and we have, we have this building from the city and has many things, has been many things before the rodeo market. Many of our customers remember that it was the rodeo market, and they remember that as they were children. Before we moved in, we cleaned the floors, molded off the wall, and turned it into what it is today, which is a community arts center. We are all volunteer-based and a nonprofit organization, and we do have our challenges because most nonprofits do have challenges. We are working hard to create more programs to grow. In recent years, we have had little or no support for SWAG and the rodeo market. And we have, have a free children's art program, two at the rodeo market, and we have moved over to the Irving Street Library and holding a children's program there. So we have gotten funded through FCFD on these projects. The other project is the Sculpture Garden, which I believe we have the most beautiful sculpture garden in Westminster. It really is hard for us to fund this program because there's a lot of challenges to it. We don't have to maintain them, but every year we have to get new sculpture guard, we have to get new sculptures every year to beautify our park. We do, you know, it's, oh, sorry. Oh, hang on just a second. So we just want to thank the City Council and the city for everything that they have done for us. We have many fundraisers planned in our future and at the Rodeo Market Community Arts Center. And a new lease maybe would be a nice thing to have, to come to Southwest Minister. We can only hope that you help us, and we have a new group of volunteers that we believe have, that we've been better than we ever have because we have more volunteerism. We ask that you get involved and not allow the city management to force us out. Instead, seek ways of collaboration. We don't need, in our area, another vacant building. We have many of them now. And this is what's really important to us, is the community arts center. So I want to thank you guys for your time and listening to me. I have a couple of hands out. This was one that the city gave me, and this was our rebuttal, too, that...
Is there anyone who did not get their name on the sign-up list that has a comment? Sir, come on down, please. And just for the record, since I don't have your information here, would you please give us your name and address?
Did you say address as well?
Yes, please.
My name is Roger Odegaard. I'm pastor at First Southern Baptist Church of Westminster. The address is 7990 Lowell Boulevard. And I just want to pose a question and obviously a comment. We have a, probably grandfathered in, a digital reader board sign. And my question is, is in, under the code in 1117, it says that the digital sign is not allowed to change except for every 30 minutes. And so my question is why? I've talked to several people from the Land Development Office, and everybody says, I don't know. Nobody knows why the rule is in there. I've asked several people, and so that's my question is why? Because it negates the purpose of having a digital sign, because most digital signs only have so much space. And so when you look at the businesses around the community area and other cities that are nearby, they are allowed to change every six or eight seconds. I did speak to one of the officers in the traffic department, and if it's a concern for safety, he said in 20 years on the force, he's never seen a sign cause an accident. So I'm not sure what are the reason for that, or if it's the brightness or so forth, but we've had it there for many, many years. And so my suggestion is that it would be allowed to be changed to benefit, for example, if there's a safety reason, if the amber alerts, for one. If we had to put multiple information and it has to wait to change for 30 minutes, the amber alert would be useless. So how could, you know, we want to benefit the community and other places. Now, we also know that the schools in the district have signs that change all the time, and the argument will be, well, they're federal and it doesn't apply, but it still affects the community. And they get to use it, the parents get to see the signs and things change and information. So it still benefits the Westminster community, but they get to change. So why not other businesses that, or, and this will fall under, ours will fall under the institution use of monumental signs. So why not allow them the same privilege, even though I understand that's federal use? Why can't they have the same privilege to communicate, to benefit, like a church, they benefit the community? So if there's more information, why, why shouldn't we be able to be allowed to allow the sign to change every six, eight, or 10 seconds? And so I don't understand the purpose for 30 minutes. So I pose that to you. I appreciate you guys' service to the city, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. I'll do it in a second. So ladies and gentlemen, is there anyone else who wishes to come forward at this time? Yes, sir, come on down.
My name is George Havercorn. I live at 3311 West 92nd Place, Westminster. And in listening to the pastor, I pass by that church at least daily, if not more often. And the sign that he has is monochromatic. It's never distracted me, not like the sign on a Boulder Turnpike where I think Broomfield has that big municipal stadium, and they made him tone it down because it was causing accidents. All the different colors it would flash and everything. But their sign is monochromatic. It doesn't, if I'm stopped there, I'll look at it. If I'm not, I just go right on by it. But I don't see that that one wouldn't serve as a service to the rest of the community if you could put other things on there, especially if they are doing things like amber's alert and stuff like that. So that's all I got to say on that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before I close this item, is there anyone else who has any items they'd like to bring forward to City Council at this time? Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is reported city officials. Mr. Tripp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank everybody who came tonight to speak and who's attending this meeting, and would like to tell those that have asked questions or made comments on things. We've got staff members here who are, who are taking notes down, probably be trying to reach out to you before you leave the meeting to get a name and a phone number so we can follow up with you. But through our multiple systems that we have, through our website, through calling City Hall, you know, these sorts of questions can all be brought to us, and we can attempt to get back to you and provide you answers. I will say something specific on the signage issue because it's timely, and that we've just reported to City Council that later this year, we'll be embarking on a study of the city sign code. The city sign code has not been updated for many years, and many technologies have changed since then. And I'm certainly not making any promises as to what the result of that study will be, but I think we are going to look at our signage codes in the city and how they apply best today. I want to, I want to congratulate the Adams 12 schools. Those graduation rates are remarkable. I've been listening to people and watching people come up to these meetings for 40 years and talk about their school districts. But when you can come up and talk about graduation rates that are at that level, and knowing how important you are to our city and our community, congratulations. I'm just really, really proud that, to hear those numbers on your behalf. And finally, we'll have two, a couple of post-meeting items. We have an exec session, which is closed to the public, but it's to brief our council on some exciting economic development activity that's happening in our city and to get their direction. And if there's time, following this meeting, we'll be presenting a homelessness report by a staff member who's been working on that for quite some time and to give them an update as to what we're doing in our community to deal with the issue of homelessness in our city. Again, thank you all for attending this evening.
Next item on the agenda is...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, one last item. The main thing I was supposed to do, I forgot. Thank you, Deputy Opie, for reminding me that we have very special, we'll call her a guest tonight. This is the last time she gets to be called a guest. Then she'll be a regular attendee and her second. Then she'll be a regular attendee and her second attendance here. Vicki, stand up if you would, please. Vicki Manley has just been hired as our General Services Director. We welcome Vicki to our senior staff, and we're glad to have you here.
All set? Okay. At this time, I'll turn to the council, see if there are any comments from the council. And if not, I'll lead off with one. This past weekend, on Friday and Saturday, the Westminster Youth Advisory Panel sponsored the first-ever Metro Region Youth Leadership Conference. Now, this is a group of kids, young adults, that go to the high schools and junior high, in some cases, on schools that serve Westminster. They're not necessarily residents of Westminster, but they are from around the area. On Friday, we had over 150 students from around the area that showed up. On Saturday, we had about 80. You can imagine trying to get students to come back on a Saturday morning, starting at 8:00, but we had a large number there. The students put this thing together, the board, the council, the panel. They went out and found the speakers, they went out and found a hotel, they made the arrangements through the schools, Westminster Public Schools, even provided a school bus on a Friday to try to get... Because we had 40 students coming from there as one group. But those kids did just one bang-up job in putting this thing together. The feedback that I've heard from the students that were there on Saturday, I think they have a great chance of having another summit next year, and I would not be surprised to see at least another 100 students show up, based on the feedback. These kids are carrying it back to the schools. The people who attended, those are the leaders of our future and your future. And we're seeing some of those. At least one of the board officers is a Vetter Scholarship finalist, and we wish Emma the best of luck on that, that she finds out real soon. Because I've had more than one conversation with her mom that she wants her to stay in-state for college, because without the Vetter Scholarship, she's going out of state, and mom's very persistent in trying to get that scholarship for her. So what we saw was just an outstanding group of kids who were taking a leadership role. Their discussions were across the board, political, non-political, what can they do to make things better? Unfortunately, the Florida incident was part of the conversation, and they will continue to lead us in the future. But that's the kind of students we're looking for. Kathy, I need some more help from Adams 12. I've got a couple of schools that aren't represented this year, and I'm hoping you and Chris will make sure we have representation next year. So it's a challenge to you to help us get that. Other than that, other constant comments. Ms. Byrd?
So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. And I also would like to thank Kathy Plummer and Laura Mitchell for being here tonight and sharing all of that great information. You know, those kinds of results don't just happen by accident. It happens when you've got strong leadership in a school district, people who are thoughtful, who care, and are willing to plan and execute on a plan for the long haul. I encourage citizens of Adams 12 to participate in the Elevate process. I think it's just as very commendable that you are reaching out to really find out what's working and what opportunities there are for improvement within the district, and I think it's a great time for citizens to have their say. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you for making that opportunity available, and really for providing great education for our kids in Adams 12. Another thing I wanted to call our citizens' attention to is on March 10th, our foundation for Adams 12 will be having its annual gala. And this is the principal fundraising event for the foundation that serves to grant dollars back to the Adams 12 five-star schools. The focus of funding for the gala is continuing, or rather, career and technical education programs. So kids who want to learn real-world skills so that they are career-ready when they get out of school will have true opportunities through this program. There's a school called Bowman within Adams 12 that serves a lot of Westminster students. Actually, any student in high school through the Adams 12 district can participate in classes in Bowman, and the courses range from training kids how to be diesel mechanics when they get out of school. They learn carpentry skills, they learn welding skills, computer science, nursing, EMT. You can finish a program and become certified as an EMT. I could go on and on, but kids are able to get out of this program, not only with their high school diploma, but also with certifications. They have them real earning potential once they come out, and that's also with no debt. So the gala will be funding more of those kinds of programs so that more students are able to take advantage of that kind of instruction. So if you are free, Reggie Rivers will be there. He'll be emceeing the event and will be the keynote speaker. So please come, bid, and contribute to our kids. And another thing I wanted to mention, since we're on the topic of students and kids, this week, well, actually, last week, I had the opportunity to bring Greg Moss, who's the new president and CEO for the Metro North Chamber of Commerce, on a tour of Westminster Public Schools Career and Technical Education Program. And they are doing phenomenal work with their students there as well. So I'd be remiss in not mentioning the great work for two of our school districts. I know Jefferson County has a fantastic program also with Warren Tech. Counselor Scully and I are planning a field trip there as well. But there's so many great things that are happening in our public schools and in our high schools. The way education is delivered today is not the same as it was, I know, when I was in high school. It's very relevant, and we're really working hard to make sure our kids have good skills. So pay attention and stay involved and support our public schools. Thanks.
Ms. Seitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take a quick moment to give some context for the comments that school board member Laura Mitchell brought up on the Start by Believing campaign. This started a little bit over a year ago. The city of Westminster has been partnering with other local agencies and local leaders to work on the issue of sexual assault and prevention and awareness, and really educating people how to react if they're disclosed to. And so we've been really blessed to have our school districts participate, our police department participate, our chambers of commerce participate, the DA's office. We have the Blue Bench, which is the Rape Crisis Center for the area, the Ralston House, which is a child advocacy center, and Wings, which helps adult survivors of child abuse. So all of these different groups have come together. But the chamber, Westminster Chamber and North Metro Chamber are leading the charge. At the Westminster Chamber, on March 30th, at their awards gala, there's going to be an opportunity to learn a little bit more about the pledge to start by believing. And they are also going to honor one of Westminster's finest, Commander Hindershot, who she and her team were instrumental in apprehending a serial rape suspect. And he was later convicted, so a serial rapist. So I have to say, the Westminster Chamber has been an incredible partner, as has the school districts. I would encourage all of you to support the Westminster Chamber's awards gala on March 30th and attend. I do believe there's still a few tables available. And help us celebrate this amazing officer.
Okay, is there any other comments by council at this time? Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda will be the consent agenda. We have reviewed this with council at the pre-meeting. There has been a request to pull items 8F and 8G from the consent agenda. I deal with those as separate motions. So other than that, from a member of the council, for the remainder of the consent agenda. Ms. Pinter?
Yeah. Let me... Thought I was ready, but... Hold on a second. I... Too many hundreds of pages. So does someone have it pulled up on their PDF? Anita, do you want to do it?
I move that the City Council adopt the consent items 8A through E, and then H through... 8H through L.
Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Scully?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, you will please use your lights. And the motion passes on a 7-0 vote for items not including 8E... I'm sorry, 8F and 8G. So at this time, Ms. Pinter, if you would, on 8F.
Yes. No, Mr. Frankel, I was referring to your email. Do you want me to call out the amendment of the second paragraph in my motion or in the discussion?
I would suggest in the motion with the amendments called out.
Okay. All right. So with regard to consent agenda, item 8F, I authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement... No, that's wrong. Apparently, I can't work my PDF tonight. I don't know why you thought this was a good idea, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I authorize the city manager to enter into agreement with Anger Callaway... That's wrong. Is that right? That's right. Anger Callaway, Bastian, and Straga, I apologize, LLC for work related to employment and labor law matters in an amount not to exceed $50,000. And then with an amendment to the second paragraph for 8F, paragraph nine, "In connection with the performance..." Do you want me to read the whole paragraph?
Yep.
All right. "In connection with the performance of this agreement, the firm agrees not to unlawfully discriminate against any subcontractor, employees, or applicant for employment because of race, religion, color, sex, immigration status, gender identity, or expression, sexual orientation, national origin, or disability. Such actions shall include but not be limited to the following: employment, upgrading, demotion, or transfer recruitment, or recruitment advertising, layoffs or termination, rates of pay, or other forms of compensation, and selection for training, including apprenticeship. The firm represents that it will require a similar affirmation of nondiscrimination in any contract it enters into with subcontractors as part of the performance of this agreement."
Mr. Frankel, is that covered, the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council on item 8F? This will be a contract with Anger Callaway, Bastian, and Straga. Ms. Pinter, you have a comment?
Yeah, my comment was just, I particularly wanted to thank Mr. Frankel, and Counselor Byrd really called this out, and we had a really robust discussion in the pre-meeting, trying to make sure that we were including all the language that we could to make sure that we were following the law and providing the utmost protection. So thank you. Thank you, Counselor Byrd.
Okay, any other comments by council? This is strictly a vote with your lights. And the motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item would be 8G. Mr. Demott, if you would, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve 8G, which is approve a contract with Senator Galv, Fred, and Rice to retain their legal services. I would add the amendment to paragraph nine of 8G, reading, "In connection with performance of the agreement, the firm agrees not to unlawfully discriminate against any subcontractor, employee, or applicant for employment because of race, religion, color, sex, immigration status, gender identity, or expression of sexual orientation, national origin, or disability. Such actions shall include but not be limited to the following: employment, upgrading, demotion, or transfer recruitment, or recruitment advertising, layoff or termination, rates of pay, or other form of compensation, and selection for training, including apprenticeship. The firm represents that it will require a similar affirmation of nondiscrimination in any contract it enters into with a subcontractor as part of the performance of this agreement."
We have a second to the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion and, excuse me, amendment? Okay, hearing none, this will again, we vote with your lights. And the motion carries on a 7-0 vote. We can move on to item 10A. There are no, I'm sorry, item nine, there are no appointments in raising nixes tonight. Next item up would be item 10A. This is Counselors Bill Number 11. Ms. Byrd?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 11 on first reading, amending chapters 8 through seven and... Oh, I'm sorry. Amending chapters 8 through seven and 8 through 8 of the Westminster Municipal Code for the city's water and sewer utilities, and authorizing the city manager to adopt utility service rules.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council on Counselors Bill Number 11? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Ancheson.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
DeCambrera.
Yes.
Demott.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Seitz.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
There, I'm still waiting on one. There we go. Okay. Motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of Resolution Number Nine. Ms. Seitz?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number Nine, authorizing the city's staff to proceed with the sale of property at West 112th Avenue and Cherokee Street in the amount of $62,238 to the city of North Glenn.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Scully?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Tripp, if you would, please.
You asked counselors, you asked some great questions in the pre-meeting, and I thought it would be helpful to have those answers provided again for the public tonight. And Stephen Groeters, would you come up and talk a little bit about why we believe this is a good fair market value for the land?
Go ahead, Stan.
Absolutely. Shannon, go ahead. I think Shannon would like to actually ask the question.
Right. I just think this would be helpful for people in the audience to understand if they haven't read the agenda memo. So we're proposing to sell a piece of land that's in the city of North Glenn. We purchased it in 1999, and it looks like we're going to be selling it for about $20,000 less in today's dollars than we purchased it back in 1999. And I'm just hopeful that the city can talk about why we think that that assessed value is appropriate.
Yeah, thank you very much. And one thing I wanted to start with is just affirm what it is we're trying to do with this site, and that is sell it because the utility has done analysis, and we do not feel like there's further need or value for this property. So I just wanted to start by saying that, need or value to our utility system. A couple of things. The city of North Glenn did hire an appraiser to come up with a value for this property, and they had results that were significantly lower than what we would have liked to see. That said, we did review their appraise value and their details, and we do feel like there is some merit to some parts of their appraisal, so we wanted to be careful with that, but also recognize that this property does belong to our ratepayers, and we wanted to bring the maximum value. And we felt it was a good and fair offer in light of all things to come back with what the county has assessed the value of this property at. And one thing that I want to call out is that there have been some changes over time since the original purchase of this property, including an encroachment on this small parcel of property for construction of another tank and so on. So it's somewhat of an awkward-sized parcel. It's small. North Glenn has a desire to supplement their municipal construction in this area with a park and open space using this property. They are not expressly favorable to using this property for other purposes. So in light of all of those things, we really feel like the negotiated price of using the county assessor's value is appropriate and fair for us to move forward with.
Ms. Byrd, do you have any other questions?
I do, yes.
Go ahead.
So I'm not sure, how does the county assessor's valuation work? Are they typically on par with what other private assessors would do? Or how do their assessments compare generally?
I really, I don't know that I can speak to exactly how they go about their valuation.
And I know that there was some mention earlier when we talked about this, that if we were to go and get another assessment, that that likely could come back down closer to a lower assessed valuation. How likely do you think that is?
Sure. One of the things that we wanted to consider is the cost of going out for another appraised value. So we did look into that, and we received some quotes on what that would take, and it's to the tune of several thousand dollars, between $4,000 and $6,000 or so for us to get a standalone, independent appraised value for the property, and that's something we wanted to take into consideration. It is likely that an appraised value... Well, I don't want to say likely. It is possible that an appraised value could come in lower. It potentially could come in higher. And that's where we really relied on city staff who have familiarity with land acquisition and what they're seeing out in the marketplace right now. I know in Public Works, we're actively pursuing a lot of land acquisition over the last years. And based on all of those factors, we really feel like it's a reasonable value.
Ms. Seitz?
I just want to highlight a piece of information that maybe you just said, but I don't believe I heard, which was there was an appraisal done. Am I correct? And that appraisal value was a fraction of what the, of what the assessors, the county assessors rate per square foot?
That's correct. So, North Glenn's appraiser came back with a rate that was right around 80 cents a square foot. I don't have the exact number in front of me. It was right around 80 cents per square foot, and the county's assessed value is about $2.49 a square foot.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Byrd?
Do you know who conducted the assessment for the city of North Glenn?
We do have a copy of that appraisal, and I can provide that to the council.
I was just wondering if it was somebody from North Glenn staff, or if it was somebody privately?
It was an independent hire, yeah.
Okay, other comments by council? To add on to what Mr. Bruder talked about, is one of the things, this is property within the city of North Glenn, and any development on it is controlled by them. So, for us to try to use it for something else would require the city to approve it, which they're unlikely to do, because they have their own idea of how they'd like to finish that piece of property. But to what we talked about earlier, it's not viable for us to continue with the ownership of that, even though the price is different from what we paid for it 20 years ago. It doesn't fit into our system, and we don't have enough space there with approximately a half an acre, that we could build anything of any substantial size or could get to it without approval of the city of North Glenn. So, we're kind of caught in a catch-22. We own it, but we can't do anything with it. So, we can at least recover some portion of what we paid for it when we intended to do something with it 20 years ago, but the world has changed in 20 years. So, although it is a reduction in what we paid for it, it's only viable after we recover anything other than just to let it sit there and do nothing, because we don't have a way to develop it. Any other comments from council then? If not, this is a roll call vote, and this would be Ms. Parker.
Byrd?
Yes.
DeCambre?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Acheson?
Yes. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. The next item on the agenda was item 10C. And Ms. Sykes, you're up.
I move to adopt resolution number 10, authorizing the city manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement with the Westminster Station Regeneration LLC for lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Westminster Station filing number 1, for development of two mixed-use buildings in substantially the same form as the agreement presented to council.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
Is there any discussion by council? Ms. Byrd?
So, I'm very excited about this. Reading the agenda memo, just, it talks about all of the great work that our Economic Development Department has been doing to make sure that every part of our city has a thriving local economy. And one thing I just wanted to call out to our citizens, one of the reasons this is so important, this is just reading from the memo, "A significant attribute of the project is the vision alignment for the types of tenants that our regeneration is engaging. The tenants are local, small-business startups and incubators that are highly compatible with a local near-transit. The dynamic created here creates a pipeline that benefits other parts of the neighborhood and extends beyond the boundaries of the Westminster Station area." So, just to call out some of the ground-floor retail that is anticipated here for this project, there's going to be, Gemini Brewing has signed a letter of intent, and they are local to Westminster and would provide authentic neighborhood character, and also encourage other restaurants to co-locate in this area. There would also be a local coffee shop that would complement Gemini by providing food and beverages at other times of the day. And in addition, there would be a nonprofit incubator maker space for culinary and restaurateur startup businesses. I'm excited by this. This is so unique and very special. I don't know of many other suburbs that have this kind of economic development going on in their community. So, kudos to our staff. Thank you for your hard work on this. I'm so excited and looking forward to voting yes on this.
Ms. Sykes?
So, one of the problems with serving with someone as articulate as councilor is I steal all of the good talking points before I, it's like plain jeopardy. I have to really hit quickly if I want to get a good thought in there. So, I'm going to say yes. Yes, and I think I've had the pleasure to meet the regeneration group at a few different events. And so, our economic development staff not only worked tirelessly to bring us an amazing project, but to find us partners that have a lot of vision alignment. And it's really exciting when you meet someone that not only understands your vision, but is excited about it and wants to be part of it. So, welcome to Westminster. This is a big deal for Westminster. We've invested a lot as a community in our T D. We've seen from the beginning that that train station is an opportunity for revitalization and vibrancy in the southern portion of our town. And it's so amazing to see our economic development department and our private investment make that vision a reality. So, thank you.
Any other comments by council? For regeneration, we just got new numbers last Friday from RTD for weekday boardings, 1,800 a day. You've got a lot of customer potential coming down there, and it looks like it's going to continue to grow, because recently, they projected 800. Last numbers we got several months ago, they were around 14, 15, but they have new numbers they just published last Friday. So, it continues to grow. Lot of opportunity for you guys. So, thank you for coming to Westminster. All right, again, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you will, please.
DeCambre?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Acheson?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
There we go. All right. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. And ladies and gentlemen, for the Westminster City Council, that is the conclusion of our business for tonight. But as board members, you're not released yet. Next item we will convene is the Westminster Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. We have before you two items. One is a motion for the approval of the minutes of the proceeding meeting, and then we have a public hearing, and then one resolution to follow. So, I will maintain that the group in attendance has already been taken as a roll call, and I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of January 23rd. Mr. Demott?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the minutes of the meeting of January 23rd, 2018, as presented.
And do we have a second, Ms. Sykes?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. First item of business will be open a public hearing on the budget amendment. At this time, we'll turn to staff to see what we have there. Nothing? Strictly what's in the packet, okay? Any comments from council in regards to this before we open it up to the public? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing open, and this is for regarding the budget amendment as proposed under Wida, Wida, for the 2018 budget. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward this time and make any Okay, seeing no rush to the front, we will close the public hearing, and I will move to the board members to move for adoption of resolution number 184. Ms. Byrd?
I move to adopt resolution number 184, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the 2017 Westminster Economic Development Authority budget.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by any member of the board? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
DeCambre?
Yes.
And the motion carries on a 7-0 vote.
Next item on the agenda is the start of the hearing for the Westminster Station GID Board of Directors. And again, we will move for the consideration of the minutes of the January 23rd meeting. Mr. Demott?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the minutes of the meeting of January 23rd, 2018, as presented.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the minutes of the Westminster Station GID. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is carried. Next item on the agenda for the GID is the public hearing on the petition for inclusion filed on behalf of the city. The motion and the packet were provided to the Board of Directors. Is there any comments from any member of the board in regards to the application filed on behalf of the city? All right, seeing none, we will open it up to the public to see if there's anyone who has any comments they'd like to make in regards to the application filed by the city at this time for inclusion into the property of the GID. This is going to work out really well. Seeing no one coming forward, then I will close the public hearing and move on to ask a member of the board to recommend a passage of Councilor's Bill number two, I'm sorry, 12. Ms. Scully?
Mr. Chair, I moved to pass Councilor's Bill number 12 on the first reading to include city-owned land in the Westminster Station General Improvement District GID.
Ms. Sykes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by any member of the authority? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, you're up again.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Acheson?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
DeCambre?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Okay, now, I have a motion, vote of 7-0. The motion passes on the agenda. Members of the authority and of council, we have conducted visits as the city council of Wida Agenda and the Station GID. From these items, we will reconvene in about five minutes in the boardroom for the presentation, and then an executive session to follow. We are adjourned.